Isn't a special and regular joint meeting of the Hollister City Council and the successor agency to the Hollister redevelopment agency on March fourth, twenty twenty four? Meeting is now called to order at six thirty P. M. City clerk, please call the board.
Councilmember Perez.
Present.
Councilmember Resindals.
Present.
Councilmember Morales.
Yes.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
And Mayor Casey.
Here.
I'd also like to report that the agenda for the special and regular joint meeting of the Hollister City Council and the successor agency to the Hollister redevelopment agency was posted on the bulletin board at City Hall on February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, at five oh nine P. M. for government code section five four nine five four point two. Thank you.
City clerk, any public comments on closed session matters?
There are no public comments for the closed session.
Do you have time to continue with closed session?
Yes, Mayor. Conference of the municipal council of existing litigation, we definitely approve section five four nine five six point nine one, name and case, L. O. X. P. in the city of Hollister at Al., San Fernando County Superior Court, case number C. U. two one zero zero one one one.
Okay, so I'll get a motion to reserve the closed session.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Mayor. First meeting, a joint meeting of the Hollister City Council and the successor agency to the Hollister redevelopment agency. Meeting is now called to order at six thirty P. M.
Sure. So, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, with this law, the delivery of justice, law and order.
City Attorney, is there any reportable action from both sections in your apartment and council? We've been advised a special order circuit day. We have a certificate of recognition for Alyssa Hernandez. Council members, will you go ahead and present that?
Alyssa, do you want to move to the podium? All right. First of all, I want to thank you for being here, and I see that your family is here with you as well. Thank you for coming to support Alyssa. I'm going to present to you a certificate, but before that, I just want to make mention something I read in one of the local papers. It said, and I quote, "There is Hernandez pulling through, the pride of the Hollister Haybears." And I just thought that was so special, and I wanted to come and read that quote. Because I think it's true, Alyssa, what you've accomplished not only makes the Haybears proud, but the entire city of Hollister. So congratulations, and thank you. I'm going to go ahead and read your certificate here. So this is a certificate of recognition from the City of Hollister congratulates Alyssa Hernandez on being selected to play on L. Salibur Women's U-17 National Football Team in the Prominent Confederation of North Central America and Caribbean Association Football, U-17 Terminus. So again, congratulations. And being able to call and say what else your future has in store for you, so don't get up. Thank you. And not to put you on the spot, but you can say a few words if you'd like, totally up to you, okay?
Just want to say that we have a very important experience, and can't wait for our conference.
Thank you.
Okay, so next we're going to be doing some presentation of certificates of appreciation for all those who looked out at the Line Street apartment fire. So what I'm going to do is mention each of the organizations, and if you can have a representative come in. I know I might have hit a lot of you, so, and then our clerk will be handing out some certificates and all to be able to help you. So the Christian Worship Center of Hollister. The Community Food Bank of San Bernardino County. Community Salvation for San Bernardino County. The County of San Bernardino for providing emergency housing options. Farmhouse Cafe. Goodwill Silicon Valley. Hollister Community Outreach and Food Angels. The Hollister Downtown Association. Joe and Flora Koch. Ladies Auxiliary Members. McDonald's, the San Felipe Road Location, I think they're unable to attend, but we still wanted to mention. Red Cross. Running Rooster. San Bernardino County Office of Education. Target. The Women's Club of Hollister. And the Defense of Foreign Wars Post 1942.
These are Hollister heroes.
So a couple little bullet points, I just want to talk to you about what transpired with these folks. So we had the incident that happened on January 6th on Line Street. We had 37 residents were affected by this event. The city hall held a meeting in January 7th to discuss needs and resources for recovery. An initial dispersment was given out at that time, a total of $12,820 in gift cards was collected and donated. And then they were distributed to the families. The community foundation raised approximately 5,000 in donations from the public and was able to provide an additional support to allocate 500 per individual in each household, for a total of $18,500, including hours. And then they continue to collect for San Bernardino Disaster Recovery Fund, and they're open to continue collecting to assist in events like this at any time, so keep that in mind. But thank you to all of these groups, the Christian Worship Center for providing supplies and financial aid. Community Food Bank for providing a four-point incentivized location for donations and dispersments. Community Foundation for collecting monetary donations and providing emergency funds. The County of San Bernardino helped with the housing options and access to improved counseling services. Farmhouse Cafe gave lunch donations to the families. Goodwill Silicon Valley gave donations of gift cards. Hollister Community Outreach and Food Angels providing groceries, household items, and support. Hollister Downtown Association collected items and gift cards to be distributed through the community food bank. Joe and Flora, the property owners of the apartments, worked diligently to assist the residents with their needs. The ladies auxiliary members also gave generous gift card donations. McDonald's provided donkey vouchers for each family to receive for meals. And the Red Cross provided unseen support and financial assistance. Running Rooster prepared carton of meals. San Bernardino County Office of Education ensured that children that were affected had the necessary tools to be back at school. Target gave new towels and kitchen supplies. The Women's Club of Hollister gave Target gift cards. The Defense of Foreign Wars also gave generous gift card donations. This was really a community effort, I was just so proud of how everyone came together and really helped out these families. So thank you, thank you, all of them.
Obviously, if you don't, it's 24 hours. Well, since always fun, you know that. And all the Red Cross members, you guys did all great.
So thank you all very much, you were an efficient, poignant, work made an effort. I just wanted to add one person, Marcus Farber, the president of the Baptist Spirits Association, who donated gifts to the children who lost everything. So we also wanted to thank him for all his work before he got that.
What's on Starbucks was they donated a coffee and chocolate to his dad, and just Starbucks.
All right, and last thing we're going to do is proclaim March 2024 as American Red Cross Month. And your clerk is going to hand out a certificate, and I will reiterate. Right, whereas during American Red Cross monthly march, we recognize the compassion of people in Hollister and reaffirm our commitment to care for one another in times of crisis. And whereas the contributions of local Red Cross volunteers, 323 in the chapter, give hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest final hours. And whereas last year in the central coast chapter, volunteers helped 78 households offended by 57 home fires by addressing their urgent needs like food and lodging, as well as providing recovery support. And now therefore, I'm D. A. Casey, Mayor of Hollister, on behalf of the entire City Council, to proclaim March 2024 as American Red Cross Month. And I encourage all citizens of Hollister to join the commitment to strengthen our community and support its humanitarian mission. Would you like to say a few words? Thank you, Kiddy McMayor and City Council members. Thank you very much for celebrating the American Red Cross and more Red Cross month. I want to appreciate Avila, she is Mohammed, she is your legislative program manager for the area. You're supporting her, and some of the lives she events. And it's like the rest of the young unit, playing with the youth here. Our Red Cross spirit, solving around the details, I don't know, somebody on this end, you know, the goal. Our revenue is here supporting the community. We love the San Bernardino community, we won't go forward too anymore. Hopefully not, that is it, because we usually get to meet people on the list day. But we're here, we're here for the community, not just for the simple kind of pride, but for the various, all you allow. And to make sure that this community is well taken care of. So thank you all, thank you. Okay, before we do this public insert, I'm just going to give a little script about decorum. I need to address the manner of decorum of our meetings, and issue of warning in this regard. Meetings must be in orderly and efficient manner without lawful disruption so that the process of the city can be conducted. While the council's more than willing to listen to comments from the public, it must be done at the appropriate time and should be done at the podium with a microphone so that your words can be heard and recorded properly. If there are interruptions when council members are speaking or audience members palling, chanting, or yelling out, if you saw a warning would be issued, and if behavior continues, you might be asked to leave the chambers. If there's too much disruption in the audience, depending on the severity, it may be necessary to call a recess. But the chambers are even faster than meeting. I'd like to ask for your courtesy cooperations regardless, so it won't be necessary to take any of these steps. Yeah, this is one of the public input. Prior to taking public comment, I want to announce that the public notices regarding the Eaton Housing Density Bonus Application and West Fairview Development Agreement had a typo and will be re-noticed for the margin to council meeting. This is the time for anyone in the audience to speak on items that's not on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speaker cards are available in the lobby and are to be completed and given to the city clerk before speaking. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, state your name and city for the record, and speak to the city council. If you're joining us via Zoom, please click on the bottom of your screen to reach our in. If you're joining via Zoom using a cell phone, please press star line. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, the maximum 30 minutes per subject. There's no state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on any items not on the agenda. City clerk, do we have public comment?
Yes, D. Casey, the first speaker is Ruth Erickson.
From the Jefferson to Hollister. First, I'd like to thank you for letting me speak. I'll call all the city council members, and the only person that called back was Roland, thank you, Roland. It was concerning AT&T requesting from the CPUC to take away landlines from Hollister. And many people are reading their landlines as their life lessons. During emergencies and after emergencies, many people cannot use their cell phones. Also because of the topology where they live, they can use a landline, not a cell phone. I'm going to use the cell phone when I leave home. Board of Supervisors and city councils all around California have written letters to the CPUC to ask them, to request them. Please do not allow AT&T to take away the landlines. So I gave, I left for Roland the letter. He's got a packet there, the letter and some newspaper, I think. So if you want to read them, he has them. I also wanted to invite with a lighter note. Friends of the library, we have one library here. Friends of the library are having a fundraiser on March 24th at the Elks Lodge. You can get your tickets if you wish online. I have flyers if anybody wants a little flyer. And we hope you could all attend because we are trying to build onto the library to expand it. As you probably know, the library was built in 1960, when the community was very small. We are baulting at the seams, we had no room to put a lot of things. We had to get rid of a lot of things. So now we are trying to raise arms so that when the expansion is done, we can fill the rooms with whatever is needed. So please invite it. I also, since I have a little bit of time, want to just thank you for approving a new airport sign. Because for about over three years, I have been nagging everybody about this. We didn't have a sign for a long time because it was not found. On, it's a little, anyway. So now we're going to get the new sign, thank you, and thank you very much.
The next public speaker is Flora Koch.
Good evening, Mayor Casey, City Mayor of the Desert, Mayor of the City Council members, Hollister citizens, and of course Hollister community, a lot of them have left. But we, I want to thank you, number one, for the opportunity to come to the podium tonight. My name's Flora Koch, my husband Joe Koch. We are the owners of the two fourplexes on Line Street. As we talked about, and we definitely honored a great amount of people. We, all happened on January 6th, Saturday, as you said, 37 residents were affected. And thank God, everybody got out. This was something we had never experienced in our whole lives. And we want to say how amazed we were of the prompt support and outreach of Hollister and services and the Hollister community, we've never seen anything like that. Hollister, I believe, is a testament of how communities come together in crisis, and you are definitely an example of that. We want to express our gratitude, not everybody is here or was here, but the fire department, the police department, the Red Cross, the Food Bank, the Hollister officials here, the Hollister community. And thank you, David, most of all, too, and organizing being mayor from the point on to still today and assisting everybody. We again want to thank you for everything you did.
And those are all the public speakers for public comment.
I was speaking on the bottom to the consent agenda. Do any membership council have any questions or comments from the public agenda? And plus, whether somebody's in?
I don't have any questions, but I'd like to call, I don't know, somebody, please.
Do not thank you.
Okay, thank you all, we have emotions with through. If a center agenda, with the exception of Ivan 27, someone, someone, I was a David, five, five. Can you see there's five zero?
And Mayor Casey, do you want to see if there are any public comments for the agenda items? If you can send us them.
Okay, sorry. All right, so then let's move to Ivan seven. New resolution, City Council, City of Hollister, pretty 20,000, which is the San Bernardino Leadership Institute.
Thank you. So yes, Vice Mayor presented this item. We had brought a presentation to you a month ago, or the January 16th meeting, 15 minutes ago, regarding the San Bernardino Leadership Institute. They spoke of their promoted 12-month program, which was designed to build diverse leaders in the community. By consensus, we were directed to return with an agenda item to allocate $20,000 general fund to support the development of this program. So we're bringing this back today for discussion. And if approved, then we would go forward with issuing payment to this organization. And we do have Brenda Weatherly here in the audience this evening, if there are questions of her as well, as the board member of the program.
That's 100%, did you have a question or some?
No questions, but comments that I would like to have.
Okay, we don't have a comment for the side in set for it.
No public comments for the side.
Okay, so that's one of those, if you want to.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I had a poll item to state my position, I think I made it very clearly about not wanting to spend $20,000 to start at this. So I just wanted to pull it, and then that way to vote no on it, when it's time to vote, so.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm 100% in support of it, of course, but I'd also like to have some check-ins at some point. I'm a hundred percent in support of it, of course, but I'd also like to have some check-ins at some point. You know, here there are far less, so potentially maybe twice a year, did you see? Because I'm not convinced that we've done that at this point, and I really think we've seen the benefit of leadership as recently as this evening and recognition. And so for me, I think it's maybe well spent, and I have that tap back for more, but we can need for more. Thank you, Mayor.
Also, I'm nervous.
No, I'm also in full support. I'd just like to ask if they the leadership team would consider incorporating government alliance in recent equity to normalize the conversations and politically to guide our government impacted in a lot of different ways to policy and their role in terms of institutionalized. And thank you.
I just don't understand except that I support your project. I've seen some leaders on it come out of the earlier meeting of your project, so I think it's a great thing. So if there are any more comments, then let's go ahead and do the vote. Make it a motion on this. Someone? Almost in favor? Almost opposed? Alright, motion carries forward. Let's keep on to our first public commentary. Resolution number twenty-two dash thirty-one, the resolution of the city council, city Hollister denying deal twenty-two-three-two, and holding the plan to which the denial is conditional use permit twenty-two-three-three to install a CNG fueling facility for exclusive use by Star Concrete Vehicles operating on the adjacent Star Hatch Plant and Material Supply Facility located in Market Good Road, located on that industrial zone in the strip. Let me get a sample for you. Hi, I'm Mayor Andy. What's your name?
I'm presenting a new deal of tiny commission action on the twenty-three-third street. That's our fund is of the fuels. I'm starting first coming on through the tiny commission now that we're hearing to consider commission use permit twenty-two-three-three. To get approval to construct a private who provides natural gas room facility. The funding condition voted five-two-zero to deny the commission use permit. No, we think it's required by the law. The commission use permit requires five findings to be made, which includes any compliance with the Sony District and what the project is located. Compliance with the general plan. Approval or compliance with the California Land Use Quality Act. But the location by design operation, operating characters of the project are complying with the existing and future mine use. And that the proposed use will not impair other several integrity or the character of the district in what is located. The project, as it was presented, was presented as an accessory used for illegal nonconforming use located in one-five-one North Press Road. Also known as San Diego Lockery. This map shows where San Diego Lockery is located. It's outlined in red. It's five-one one-five-one North Press. The proposed project is on the Sony portion, and it's outlined in our color. And this show the current zoning for both sites. The existing San Diego Lockery is located within the neighborhood mix of Sony. And the proposed is located within the industrial Sony. Though someone presented the grounds for appeal and stated that it it was separate from what they were, which had come out in one-five-one podcast, that it's a separate operation and that it would have its own access off of their road. However, based on the plan that they submitted that is inaccurate, the proposed site the proposed project site is outlined in the light blue color. And the existing San Diego Lockery is in the dark of blue, and the circle shows where the listed a primary access, which is through San Diego Lockery through the proposed park. Which in a sense, they are expanding the illegal nonconform use. They also have the existing site is not occupied by materials and vehicles that are not permitted. There's not home titles for that. As you can see, the entire side is doing. This is figures on the existing site. There are concerns with the driveway length and width. As you can see, the materials are being stored there, and there's vehicles as well. They have some landscaping, but it's very minimal. In the simple screenshot of the plans that's submitted, the site only has one percent acreage, the funding district requires a ten percent minimum landscape, that proposing to increase to two percent, which is very minimal. And that's in additional photo of the existing. During our analysis, we've found that we cannot make the highlands as required in the conditional use permit because it is not, it is not, it's not consistent with the general plan. Section seven-two-two-four-three-two-three-zero due to state that no nonconforming use of it to be enlarged, increased, or expanded, sorry, extended to occupy a greater area land than was occupied when it became nonconform use. It's also not compliant with the Sony District because it hasn't complied with the access with the landscaping. And because they have storage of noncommitted vehicles and materials. And it's also sent from C4 because C4, section one-five-two-seven-zero extends any pocket that from the agents you adjust or disagree. The applicant was notified that they could modify their conditional use permit and maybe comply with the landscape, with the driveway access, and the improvement because the industrial Sony does allow a standalone service station. However, they opted to follow with our knowing that we're denying what was a tiny commission. They showed not to give a meditation and yeah. So again, the applicant is, well, I'll just submit a new conditional use permit as long as it's compliant with the general plan and the Sony requirements. We do, and I'll make them aware, I'll make them aware that it may be subject to C4 because unfortunately, they do not need the info that I'm giving, because the person is not invited. So our recommendation is for, the council has two options. One is to adopt that, so to deny the tiny commission action twenty-three-three-two, and of all the tiny commissions denial of C4 twenty-three-three-two subject to the findings continued under the resolution. Or option two, to continue the hearing when their staff provide additional information on the petition. That being said, the applicant, the applicant, the full field vice president, Scott Nelson, is available here soon, I believe. And Mike Watch is represented in this. But doesn't.
Two more questions. Plus, number seven, is there any questions?
Yes. Thank you. So I think I heard you say from the presentation that this one, but upon, I'm sorry, the staff recommendations for upon commission went to deny the project?
Yes.
Okay, that's my thought. And it was a five-year vote?
Yes.
It seems like they were told, we were told that they were not going to use that entrance. But that's what they submitted on their original plans?
Yeah, that they're going to enter through San Diego Lockery as a primary access.
Okay. So we were here last meeting. There was three of us here, two council members were out. And this item was pulled. Why was it pulled?
That was the one here, and there were closer interviews.
But the applicant was here?
No.
So Victor Gomez. Yeah, I'm just curious because I saw you here. What? I'm curious, and I think I do have the right to ask why it was pulled and why it's yeah, because I thought that kid was here. Actually, I saw the public figure that next.
Is there any problem with that? I don't have any problem with that, but if you want to talk to her as part of the public hearing, then maybe wait until you open the public hearing. Otherwise, it's not part of the show. I don't do that.
Sure. Yeah, when you do come up here, Mr. Gomez, I just think that the public should know why this pulls when it was agendaizing, staff wasn't getting notice of that, and so they'll be moved again with a service and realist here. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
That's another best questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I do have a couple. You talked about how some of the property currently is not in compliance with the conditional use permit. And as far as you talked about vehicles and other things.
Right, currently stores, materials, and vehicles, those are not, they do not have a kind of relationship.
Okay, and so do we have an open code enforcement action on this property?
I believe we do, yeah.
Okay, so I was.
I'm sorry, I, I don't know that was. Okay.
Okay. I'd like to know more about that. That's one thing that we do, is in my mind, it's a different thing if we do not. And so did I hear you correctly say that if they wanted to do a commercial gas station, that that would be allowed to use?
It doesn't necessarily want to do commercially, but do standalone service station and let it be for that use. But the issue was that they were accessing it through a legal nonconform use. They brought it back to staff and proposed entry through gives and that landscape and the additional permit. Yes, they can, they're going to follow it.
So there is a path forward, as you say. And so, and it wouldn't require that it be a retail assailant. As I read the staff reported, my recollection is it's something that they want for their use only and specifically for their.
Yeah, and they can do that, just they just like if they want the access and not any other.
Okay, and so, and that's been shared with them that there is a path forward, there is a way to get to, yes?
Yes.
And so also, did I hear, or was it referenced that maybe there could be a general plan amendment request for this as well? Make this path forward for them if they want to facilitate that.
I mean, I guess they wouldn't need a general plan because it isn't allowed to use and that it's so industrial, so they could standalone service station. It's all for that, just a conditional use permit as longer they, they tend to have the general plan and Sony District.
Okay, that's all the questions that I'm thinking.
Also, I'm impressed. Any questions?
Yeah, I'm just starting to think of why we wouldn't just look around the alternative. Please, can we answer that?
When we get to public hearing, the public will answer that. So I think what I'll do is open the public hearing on this item. And I take it, yeah, what it's supposed to be one. So, yes, Mayor Casey, the first speaker is Victor Gomez.
Our manager of the council, thanks for meeting with you this afternoon. First answer your question, council member. Regarding the attendance, it was my fault. I didn't ask local fuels to be available to answer questions. I'm not a CNG specialist, so that's why I think it's important to have them. And I asked out at that time when I found out of my wonder if they could move the arrangements to me. And as you can tell, we have old rules, but they will answer these questions. And to answer your question, council member burns easier said than done. So essentially, what we never asked for residential designation on Star Concrete and San Diego Lockery's site. Nobody requested that. So in two thousand and seven, when the general plan was adopted, we didn't ask for it. It was placed on top of us. So essentially, at that time, planning staff encouraged the city council to put identity residential zone or a general plan designation on our property. We never asked for that. We're not going to. I don't know why the city would do that at that time, but again, sixteen, seventeen years ago. We own the parcel right next door. That is industrial, right? But if we do a standalone application, it makes absolutely zero sense for us to load up the cement trucks or the transfer trucks, get back on Hillcrest, drive on Industrial or McCray, go all the way around the kids and tie up traffic anywhere in that area. We have pedestrians, we have kids walking to and from school. What we said is we'll just use our, our, our overlap on the parcels to get through. We'd be happy to come back to you at some point whenever your new general plan is adopted and do a general amendment. That was actually the question we were asked in council member burns list. Not on the exist, not on the industrial parcel. We're asking about the current operation. And the answer is yes, we would come back with a general plan if we so desire to keep it. We don't want to go anywhere. And again, it's pointless for us to load up a truck and then drive all the way around and it's fueled up when you could actually just cut through right through all the parcel and not anchor any kind of traffic around the area, so on and so forth. So we understand staff's position, but the Sony code is clear, it's black and white, we understand that. But again, we never asked for it. We've always been there. We have a majority of our employees that actually live in Hollister. We, if we don't have this moving facility right next door and we end up going somewhere else, it's one less reason for us to be here. We're trying to provide clean air. We're trying to adopt these new state regulations.
Mayor, I think jumping here real quick. So, Mr. Gomez, are you representing the opponents in this matter? You're the primary speaker.
Correct.
So for due process concerns, I recommend maybe let everybody choose.
Oh, pretty much, absolutely.
Yeah, I'm pretty much sure. So essentially, what we're asking for is a denial of the resolution, uphold all empty. We'd be happy to go back and work with planning staff and grease the landscaping and put it behind the sound wall. I don't know why anybody wants to grasp behind the sound wall if you can't see. We'd be happy to do that if you request us to do that. We'd be happy to come back and do a general ban on that on the current site. If we need to, if we would like us to do that, that would be true to me. And in addition to that, I think staff's biggest concern is a standalone operation. We we will never use that facility, that CNG facility if we do not operate at the neighboring site. So San Diego Lockery and Star Concrete is not operating. We really have no use for this CNG facility, right? So why would we even do a standalone application when we're using it for the operations and so on. So again, totally understand that we are technically nonconforming, but we're nonconforming because we're giving a residential designation. I don't know how many people, I, what, you guys all know I'm in the development industry? I don't know if anybody that's flabbering at me saying, hey, Victor, can we build five hundred apartments on top of a concrete facility? No, nobody's asking for that, right? Okay, so what we're asking for, again, if you want to make it contingent, then say, hey, Victor, if you guys could operate this CNG facility, as long as you're operating and make that facility contingent upon our operations, we would be building that project. So happy to answer any questions if you have.
Do we have one other public comment? I know the public speaker's been silent.
Thank you. So I appreciate you taking the time to answer our questions. Thank you for that. And I didn't know you're in the development industry. Thanks for that. I didn't know that also, by the way, that, that doesn't, that language designated may not speak that true. And was it because of the rationale that the speaker put out?
Also, as in, as I can't speak to the rationale, but the Star Concrete facility is currently designated neighborhood, well, designated.
Any moment of a close public hearing?
Yeah, thank you. Sorry about that. So it is designated mixed use in our general plan, which is a commercial and residential mixed zoning. And the accompanying zoning district is neighborhood mixed use, which is sometimes a one to one of our. So that is the destination that was given in the two thousand and five general plan. So that is the destination that was given in the two thousand and five general plan and the zoning council designated to the.
And it sounds like you all make some recommendations to the applicant. So what? What do you recommend? I'm sorry to put you on the spot. Let's start with, what do you recommend moving forward so that we can get to an approval?
Uh, well, our recommendation tonight is a denial of the, of the staff and the planning commission, believe the findings. To approve the conditions turned up at the site not made as to an approval of an amendment for presentation. Um, the, the issue at hand is an expansion of a non-conforming use, so that, that rockery and the way that non-conforming use is worth is that. They can exist, um, they're fine to exist, they can actually be replaced. Um, so perhaps the rockery went away and a similar rockery cement, um, kind of operation came in. They are actually allowed to do that. There is a six-month window, um, in which. Uh, things can be replaced. For example, if you had the restaurant that might have been a non-conforming and then. Another restaurant went to a, in its place after that business was gone, as long as it's done within a one hundred and eighty-eight timeframe. That restaurant can come and the non-conformies can continue. The issue at hand is the expansion. Um, so that is, that's where the issue is coming from, that expansion of non-conforming use. Now, uh, because the site that's located off of Gibbs, the site in question, where the conditional use permit is. Is actually zone industrial. A conditional use permit can allow for a service station, so there is a path forward to. Develop that site as well into a conforming use, which in industrial, a service station is. Um, in fact, the operations that they have is more than industrial use, so potentially a development. Was all to do, kind of the concrete, I know it seems to go counter to it, just sort of the next door, but. The site that is proposed for development in this case is an industrial site, so they would bring it.
Okay, so just so we're clear, it's those five points that you pointed out that consider the profit. About me to decide that you're going to open them for us not to approve it. And if they do want to move forward, then they, your recommendation would be for us to deny it, but then for them to apply. The other path forward that we can suggest it.
Uh, yes, they're welcome to apply for a development proposal or application.
Okay, uh, it sounds clear. Thank you.
I see the thanks.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So, um. Although, well, sir, it seems like. We're creating, we want our obstacles and we do, I understand why staff has chosen the path they have. But it seems to me. In the last month or so, when we were talking about even the general plan update. That we were talking about, well, actually, I think it was the housing that we did today, we talked about a couple of weeks ago. Where we were talking about pub zoning and popping downtown. And this council expressed some concern about the fact that not necessarily the people who made aware of it. And so I'm concerned that we can't speak to two thousand and seven and what did or didn't happen then. But it certainly sounded like the property owner was not advocating for it. Um, I don't know if they opposed it at the time, but. Because I understand that the applicant actually owns the parcel they're advocating to put the, uh, CNG, uh, fueling stations on. And it, it makes sense to me based on the fact that they can do it. Just u- utilizing their properties and not have to put these heavy trucks out, move them around, pay more obstacles. Uh, more risk. And, and I like the idea of, uh, maybe some sort of a deed restriction, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna support the, uphold the appeal of the applicant. In this situation and, um. Yeah, I think I'll apply that definitely. Thank you, Mayor.
That's one of the best. So, so was it something about the entrance for me to the CNG base would be on Gibbs?
Uh, yes, so the property, and I think the fourth, I can show the map. But, uh, the, the property is off of Gibbs, so, um. The, the current proposal is to have a shared access point between the two properties. So, the blue site is where Star Concrete is currently located. The rockery is currently located off of Hillcrest on the north end. And then the property in question is outlined in red and the gray. Um, and the connection point between the two properties there in the center is where they'll share, propose to share a driveway. Um, they currently have a driveway, um, because they're using this as a non-conforming outdoor space. In addition to the non-conforming use in the neighborhood mixed use. Um, but in order to comply with our code requirements, the access for two four nine, what's labeled two four nine. Uh, Gibbs would need to come off of Gibbs. And there's a significant amount of signage there, if it's wide enough, the property is to have a confined driveway. For industrial apartments as well as spacing between the other driveways. And I believe there's a photo of, um. Um, so, uh, what I was gonna say about the driveway is that the property, if you're looking just immediately to the left, to the west of this property. There's a, it's kind of triangular property, about the whole public use, you can see again.
Nine oh one?
Yeah, nine oh one. So that orange is kind of a triangular property and then you can see it here in this street here. That nine oh one, this is Gibbs Drive, so we're actually right in front of the new satellite health there building looking north. Um, this driveway is the access point for that small triangle. Um, and it's proposed to be shared, possibly currently shared. The skate is a little hard to tell if it's actually active and used or not. But there is a distance requirement, um, for separating from this driveway and neighboring property and leaving it. I've tried to, so on, yes, and it's kind of a burden for that to make it compliant with that.
So I, 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 I totally support staff and most. I agree most close stock. I just don't understand this. Uh, it's me, it's, I think that the city working together with developers. Um, looking for a solution to get a, a two-way, whatever you guys do. And I have another asset out there too, definitely, but those two, I need it for fire anyways. I'd like to sit stop and, uh. Go go together and.
I would, um, I would bring the top number for us. It might, it sounds though like we were toward there's. Um. Like the path of, of getting where we want to go. It, it sounds sort of, um, from what we heard today that. It makes sense to, um. A whole vehicle because of the, because of the benefits given that price. But is there something that, I mean, other than what you've already shared, because of the general plan and. Um, that kind of would not, is there anything else that would, that you can point to me to say like, here's. Other things that you need to consider?
Uh, yes, so I would point each year when I don't look at the directions. Um, the section seventeen point two. Um, twenty-four, two, two, zero, this is our non-conforming use section of the zoning ordinance. And it just clearly states that no non-conforming use plan shall be enlarged, increased or extended to occupy a greater area of land than was occupied. So this is kind of the sticking point of where, uh, we cannot find that it is compliant with the zoning ordinance. Because expanding and building a new service station on a property for. This Samuel Lockery, um, as that use and expanding onto the site. Um, staff and the planning commission do not find the project in compliance with this section in particular, as well as the other sections. That have more to do with development standards, so there's a link to being and access. But this expansion of the non-conforming use plan is the real sticking point where if it is not a standalone service station. Staff and the planning commission not finding, so this section. So I would ask if it is the council's desire to potentially uphold the appeal. And that's why, uh, need a recommendation was just to continue, we would ask the council to provide and make the findings. For there being this conditional use permit, always to the resolution.
And painted in two lines, because on the one hand, I respect that. And again, my knowledge, we all do about playing. Um, and I am a big fan of following, putting in compliance. But I also understand that follows one of you, which is how do we get to, yes, and how do you? You know, a lot of people obviously insist we don't want to keep them growing and expanding, and so it sounds like we're out of the line. I'm not sure the path forward. One question that just came to mind is, is there any reason you couldn't develop that other piece of property happy in time gives? And then when we get the general plan done, we could do the amendment and have an infant, a dual infant, no cat infants. Is that, is that something that could be done?
I mean, it, standalone development, conditional use permit can be considered, certainly with acts of fun games. Then we would look at all the other requirements of the zoning ordinance. If it was the council's direction to do a general plan amendment, that would be the council's direction.
But you know, be, uh, made it, but I mean, for a period of time, we could, at least still have their fueling station that then would be applied for a general plan. And then once we're done with our general plan to, I mean, in theory, add that driver in the state. So to look at that.
So do you stand alone and then in future? I think technically, yes, I think. It, it, it's. I, I'll not speak desirable, I was just speaking to. Yeah, I, I mean, if, if the rockery at some point through whatever means. Uh, became a conforming use, then you would not be looking at expanding non-conforming use.
I know the thing is, this has been in place, this non-conforming use has been in place since two thousand and seven and others. How many, what has been there, and then we've done even all these years. Um, now we're sort of in this place of limbo with the general plan that we're not doing the moment, so it just really presents a problem. You said the option we would have is to do a conditional use permit, like sort of.
Yes, so the, um, what's before each night is an appeal of the planning commission's denial, so. Uh, the council could uphold your, you know, or uphold the planning commission's decision and buy the appeal. Those findings have been made and recommended to you in a draft resolution. However, if it was the council's desire to uphold the appeal and overturn all or part of the planning commission's. Recommendation and resolution of findings and conditions of approval. Uh, well, there are no conditions of approval, um, because the nomination was denied from the planning commission. So what the council will be considering is approving the conditional use permit, so. We would have to make, um, it is a requirement of the zoning ordinance. As well as kind of development law to make findings when you are approving a development project. So these are the five findings in on the zoning ordinance, seven, two, four, two, hundred. That are required to be made in order to approve a conditional use permit. And the council would also need to be considering any conditions of approval that they would place on. And so that's something, um, I, we can help you with, uh, tonight, but those would need to be coming from the council in your motion. And what we would do is we'd take, because it's going to be complicated, we'd take your motion and then we write that resolution. And bring this to you in order for you to actually review a resolution that proposes your findings and your conditions of approval for the project.
So I, I think, I think the interpretation of a non-conforming use is, uh. Kind of mean sort of loose and use, I can't technically, might as well describe that way, but we are not standing. A non-conforming use, the use of a CNG fueling station at on the industrial parcel is allowed. Is allowed, so we're not actually expanding the non-conforming use. It's a use for that operation, but it's consistent with the zone, right? And so I would propose that actually pretty easily, number one, is the proposed use is conditionally allowed. Within the subject zoning district and complies with all of the applicable provisions of the zoning. That's the finding that I would make tonight about this to council, because it is consistent with the zone in industrial. Spot. Now, if we were coming in and saying we were gonna put the CNG facility on our existing parcel, then, yeah. It's not a conform, right? It doesn't conform with existing a way use in that area of mixed use. Uh, but again, I would argue that this is not an expansion of a non-conforming use. Um, that this is a use allowed in industrial zone, so. Again, I'm just trying to make your, your job a little bit easier tonight to help us uphold the feel, and again, we appreciate staff. We appreciate, we understand why they're interpreting it this way, but sometimes, uh. Law and logic don't necessarily combine, and that's certainly, I think, the case here tonight. I think that's why you're having a difficult, you know, sort of, uh, uh, time, kind of identified it, agree to what's coming next. But again, I would. My interpretation would be it's not an expansion of a non-conforming use, because the use is allowed. And we miss real.
Yes, I may just add one thing to that, that the use is certainly. Of question, but there are also the other issues of the zoning ordinance, as I pointed out in the staff report, like the way of sleeping, access. Parking, those types of things that, um, as proposed, this night plan does not provide any of those implications, so. In order to make the finding of compliance with the zoning plan, it's. Fairly, but then also finding that the proposal aligns with all of this.
That's all I have to say.
So.
I prefer to make a motion.
Okay.
I'm gonna move that we uphold the planning mission decisions in the added conditional use plan. For the resolution, the twenty-four dash three.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, please.
So I, I would like to make a motion to only appeal. And to, um, have staff work with the applicant as it relates to the, uh. Other issues that need to be resolved to move this same forward. I, I, I do have concerns about the landscaping. I like the idea, uh, maybe not specifically. The applicant's word, but my interpretation of words that perhaps we put some sort of a deed restriction on the property. So that it's ordered change used for ownership that these things, uh, with its old way. Me, it would make sense, and, you know, I want to keep, uh, a long sales business here in town. And, um, I think we need to find a way to get to you, and so. Um, I, I, I know that this plan has that capability, or they have the direction from the council moving in that direction, so that'd be my one.
Yeah, and to, and to be clear, the motion isn't approving a CNG. Tonight, it's just saying, we're not gonna uphold planning commissions.
Right.
Ruling, staff go back and work with the developer.
Right, I second that. Yes.
Yes, all those opposed.
No.
Yeah, motion carries forward.
Welcome to the twelve forty seven, North City Council, City Hall, third amendment section. Two point oh four, two point oh five, uh, chapter two point oh four, entitled to the Hollister News Report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. So at the December eighteen, twenty twenty-three, council meeting, council. Um, by majority requested future agenda items. Staff report indicates nine AM, um, when you start time to nine AM. Our council directed the start time to four PM. And so that is actually what the ordinance amendment reflects, the date would still be the same. The meetings would start at four PM and not go past ten PM. Um, unless that meeting is extended by the city council. And this before you tonight is actually the introduction of this ordinance. If you recall, we need to bring it back for a second, adoption, and then thirty days after that, it would be effective.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So you sort of clarification to, uh, it seemed to me there was a conversation about how. Uh, we currently go directly into closed session, into the closed session, however, if we move to this format, we can do closed session. At any time during the meeting or perhaps at the end of the meeting, but then we saw that option as well as that for us to.
Right.
Yes, thank you. That's why I wanted to start by, thank you, thank you. So we can have closed action at any time anyways, correct? Pretty much, or is it just not on it?
Correct, it's it's not with the format, you can go in the closed session, we could change it to the end of the current.
Yes, I just, the other thing is, I am still from Anubak, I think that the meeting we come up with is ridiculous. Why didn't you change it if we got there? I'm talking by my.
What's your plan?
I found a way to answer the questions.
Do you have a question? You could, we'll have more deliberations, you can discuss that. Any question?
So can. How many shop times is done on? From just the department heads. Stand by. Can you tell them run into their games real quick? What's typically a department that would start? What's called eight o'clock? And so that'll be longer than me. That's in the morning, right? And how many department heads do we have? Police staff with it all. I I I think it's. An injustice to have our employees do that. Again, I'm done.
Please stand, please.
Thank you.
Tell us what else and questions. I just, my question, the question I statement is to ask the council to consider taking the attitude they had. I have to elaborate, but let's, I don't have any questions at this time. Well, actually, I do have one issue too. So if we do a four PM start time meeting, that process is starting at four PM over there.
You can have it start at any time. You can have, you can do a special meeting like we do now and have it start at three, three thirty. Or it it's really up to council departments.
But just want to go to that though. All right, so let's open the public hearing on this. No other public comments. Mayor Casey, there are no public comments, I am. So let's have some discussion. That's one of our issues.
Can you close that?
Oh, sorry, closing the public hearing. That's one of our issues, do you have any statements or comments?
Thank you, I do. So if we're going to talk about injustice, I think that the only reason that this is being put on the agenda. Is because certain members of the council do not like being criticized by the public. And there is a current movement to shut the public out from participating in democracy within our city. That to me is a major injustice. The city has a huge problem with engaging, educating and activating the public. We should be looking at creative means on how to get them here and get them their information. But as far as changing the time to be more convenient. For a community that is filled with computers, I think that's a bit of a justice, if you ask me. So I don't support really the kind. There are many other things that we can do, such as having special meetings, such as. Engaging the public in different ways to come out to meetings. But at this time, we should not be moving the time of the meetings at nine AM, four PM. Or anything. And another thing that we should be doing is, a lot of the questions that we have. Can be minimized if we ask those questions at a time. I may mention that as well. So we need to get our questions after people who come here. We need to come to the people's business at a time that they can come and participate in democracy. And then we need to leave at a time where it's not going to confuse them as well. There's a lot more things that we can do to make sure that happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. So I'm fine with either Monday at four or Tuesday at four. Thank you.
That's into France, so we have to stay there.
Yeah, it's funny, you know, we talked about trying to use, oh, you talked about trying to do different things. And yet for someone to do it during daytime, like maybe border supervisors, you know how many people they have? They're, I don't know, they're they're border supervisors, but they have a path to them. So you're, I I agree with you, Roland, we should try something to do, and we should try during the day. Where it's going to benefit the people and the employees and the council, not just one person that doesn't pay attention to the rules.
Like I said, just wanted to prefer if we're putting it out before more products. So I understand why this was proposed, and I don't think it has anything to do with shutting anyone out. I think that's, it's kind of a bold statement. I I realize that some of our needs are gone on. So all hours in the morning and early morning, and some folks do have to get up very early to get out of this area. For myself, particularly when it goes out to town, yeah, we have to come started and try to make good decisions. And for me, that's why we're here is to make good decisions. So I don't like the statement that somehow they're trying not to move people, I just don't think that's true at all. And I do see order supervisor meetings and they do not quite show enough what's important to them, and there's a topic that matters. So I'm not opposed to any of the options, you know. There was a suggestion of moving into Tuesdays that that might work better for him. Personally, I'd prefer that. I don't like, but we have to remember holidays and half-time meetings on Tuesdays. And I told him this is not going to be that, I always get confused about that. So I'd be for moving into Tuesday at four PM. I think trying something around here makes sense. I know nine AM might be kind of hard. But that's my personal, was Monday or Tuesday at four PM, but Tuesday might be better.
Thank you for that statement.
Sure.
Thank you. Again, I just want to be fully transparent with the arguments that I have. That's why I'm making this statement. I'm currently enrolled in a doctoral program at San Jose State University. And we need Tuesdays, Thursdays, sometimes Saturdays, but it's from four thirty day to three. So. I'm not trying to make this about me, because I think it's about the public. But I would like to know what the rationale is from moving from Monday to Tuesday. And I want to put forth the inconvenience that it would cause me for my Thursday minutes. And my people who transferred about that. Thank you.
I think possible or else you don't suggest Tuesday and you could collaborate.
I actually recommend Monday at nine, but we heard from our last meeting that council member. Zendos had a contract with his employer and he would be available after four. So I'm not sure if he has a contract, how he's able to go to Tuesday at four thirty. But regardless, many of us have meeting engagements that we're sacrificing. Mondays is extremely challenging for many reasons. It's probably the worst day of the week. And so looking at how do we, how do we get closer to fulfilling everybody's obligations? Tuesday at four, so we're still meeting with your contractual agreement with your employer. For many of us, Tuesdays is a lot better. We're also sacrificing other, other meetings, other obligations. You're not the only one. So that's why I'm recommending Tuesday at four o'clock.
If I can just find out some clarity about this, that's my name.
Sure.
We zoom in on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Zoom in.
Yeah, Saturdays and Thursdays.
Also, we're done.
Thank you, ma'am. So. One of my concerns about doing it, like a nine AM start is, yes, we 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 don't inconvenience all of the department heads. Because they're not out until ten o'clock that night on Mondays. But by having a council meeting that runs all day, whether it be any day of the week. We're losing twenty percent of their availability to do their other work when they're sitting here. And so for me, that's my concern. But if if we want to do Tuesdays at nine AM, I'm fine with that too. Whatever it is, because I just want to move on with this. And I do believe people can attend the meeting that they choose to, whether it be in person or by. You know, telecommunication, Zoom and or or YouTube. And they'll be there if they want to be there. And so whatever the will of the council is, I would be psyched if we beyond this. And the bottom line is, if we try and it doesn't work, we have the opportunity to switch it. But, you know, I too was an advocate for four PM start because the council member was in this. Frank Fallow gave him, but the decision, like there's a compromise that can be obtained here. And so for me, if it takes four of us to go one direction, the London, both know I'm fine with that. But it has absolutely nothing to do with finding a quiet to participate in this community. Thank you, ma'am.
So I'm hearing several folks mentioning nine AM start. Is that something that?
The next motion that we we adopt, that Tuesday at nine AM, let's do it. Setting.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, all those opposed.
I'm a guy.
So did it change then? Yeah, to be clear, that was an introduction with the Monday at four time. We'll bring it back for another introduction of the next meeting, but I also think, did you have? Oh, okay, got it. Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to council business. Item one, resolution twenty twenty four, N A two, this was the city council. What's city Holster, it could be the city of Holster, twenty twenty three, general plan progress report. You want staff report?
And Mr. Who are you going to be providing the staff? I can relate.
Thank you, sir, about that. This item is a resolution for the city council, so you will approve the general plan progress report. Annually, the city Holster and all of the jurisdictions are required to present and prepare a report on the general plan. So it's a housing moment, which supported the general plan. And have that report reviewed by the city council. And then ultimately, that report is submitted to the state, the the office of housing and team development, as well as the office of planning and basics. So I'm here to answer any questions on the report. It was included as an attachment. And and pending the council's approval, the report I will submit it to the state offices.
You have any questions, councilman Resendos? Councilman Brent?
No, thank you, miss. Thanks, that's my.
Questions? No, no questions. Okay, um, let's see, do we have any other comment?
Yes, our first speaker is Jeffrey Small.
Thank you very much for having me tonight. Mayor, council, Jeffrey Small, I'm here representing the San Mito High School District. First and foremost, we really want to thank you for including the high school district in in supporting. The delivery of the second high school to the school district. It's of critical importance. We appreciate working with staff and and working with the council. We made great strides in twenty twenty three towards delivering the second high school. Twenty four will be a critical year. We very much look forward to continuing to work together and continuing to have your support. So just want to thank you very much for including the high school district in in the annual report for the work that happened in twenty three. And let you know that we look forward to working with you with twenty twenty four. Thank you so much.
And there's all public comments we have for the time. Okay, so we have any further information or instruction on this? Did I get a motion? Motion for the second, all those in favor? All right, motion carries five zero.
All right, what the church is.
That's, sorry. All right, item two, we see present tension on installing dogways, so it was in San Soto Village along Beverly Drive and. Right, staff, possible direction.
Good evening, Mayor Casey, and to the council, Tine Barza, Inner Parks Innovation Director. This presentation discusses the installation of a six, six dogway station along Beverly Drive in San Soto Village. Staff explored some specific locations for these stations and prioritized safety for nature personnel. And the location includes. The first location would include.
Go ahead.
Thank you. The first location is Hillcrest. Oh, that's right. But it includes Hillcrest Road and Beverly Drive. And then the second location is Beverly Drive and Warner Street. And the third location would be the corner of Spruce Street and Beverly Drive. Another location would be along Borewood Drive and Beverly Drive and then Cypress Street. And Beverly Drive and then Sunny, on the corner of Sunny Spoke Road and Beverly Drive. The project expenditure for this fiscal year would be seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. And that covers staff time, the purchase of the equipment and installation. For the fiscal year twenty twenty four, the estimated cost pending household approval. Would be not to exceed eleven thousand four hundred fifty five dollars. And that include, I'm sorry, with a three percent CPI inflator for subsequent years. And staff request the city council to provide a direction on this project.
Okay, any questions, councilman Resendos?
Thank you, ma'am. First of all, thanks for doing this. I appreciate it. A lot of people in San Soto that have reached out to me discussing an interest in this. My, I guess my only question is, I appreciate the focus on Beverly specifically. But often when I'm out there, I I tend to walk that very when I'm feeling well. And what really doesn't do those, it doesn't deal with people walking with dogs. Down Fairview or up or down Hillcrest or Sunny Spoke. And I'm wondering if maybe a greater placement of them. For example, I I don't know distance wise, and I don't have a dog. So I I'm just thinking, I I like the idea of six, I just think maybe to spread them out more around. Might be more helpful. And there also, as I recall, there's at least one or two doggies, they have parks as well, correct?
Yes. We have two, and they're mainly in the front of the park near the place.
Right, and and so I also know that there's the, there are two access points to the park off of the two side streets. That would be south. I'm sorry. West, west. West, both north and south. Kind of where we're once upon a time, then software, the whole set from back there. And and for some reason, I thought I saw one at one of those sites, one of those envy points as well. But but I like the idea. Thank you for doing it. I'm just thinking maybe. Not necessarily with more, but very distance between them would be my question asked. I don't know what the rationale is. So thank you.
Councilor Press, any questions? Also, any questions? So I I just wanted to repeat what you said about costs. So the initial cost, I missed that. What was it again, the initial cost to install these?
The overall cost, I'd be purchase the equipment, staff time and installation is seven thousand seven hundred and sixty, you know.
You said going forward to maintain, it was like eleven thousand.
And in, in regards to the fiscal year twenty twenty four, we would staff with budget for eleven thousand four hundred fifty five dollars.
It's I may just check in on that. One of the reasons we wanted to also chat and and just show on this is because there is an ongoing cost associated with it. And so we wanted to give a full picture of the ongoing cost so we could have that discussion as well. Oftentimes, the discretionary requests have been one time in nature, and this is one time of an ongoing. So we wanted to have that discussion as well.
So you're talking about the dogway stations, but are you talking about the waste receptible there as well, like a trash can?
Yes.
So how often would that be? Like picked up and that kind of thing.
We have some similar equipment at our dog park, the one by the airport, and we maintain that three days out of the week, Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays.
Three days a week, that that would be well.
That's, that's what it was budgeted.
All right, and is this being done at any other streets in our state?
We we only have our dogway stations now, so just.
Of course, we have that all the parks.
Not at all of our parks, but that is our goal to.
We can have them as a person. And just the rule, if you want to handle it, do we know, are there laws in place about leaving them in the waste? On the side of some spaces and being ever enforced that? On the sidewalk, some spaces, and we never enforce that? There is a lot, and we're concerned, um, people have been from, and I'm willing to write a petition, and you can all. Okay, yes, also.
Impact on the stormwater system as well, when waste isn't picked up? They're lost, they're washed down and through through the stormwater systems.
That's all the questions I had. Okay.
Um, thanks too for the information. How many dogway stations do we have over this, the park, should we say, so, I'm dying out, I think like twenty-six?
All in our different parks?
Yeah.
I'll go with your number. Twenty-six?
Yeah.
But I can get a better, um.
Yeah, you know what, it's 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 an issue that really needs to be addressed here in the city, and it's probably due to really the economic thing. And because it's like I see downtown where people are just actually just walking their dogs, not letting their dogs stop the other dogs. I mean, I'd like to see a, um, some type of service or something we can do when, um, there's stuff like that on on the news things. That you can call and, um, clean it up or do something. I don't, I really don't. Hope this is question.
This is question, that. So do you have any, uh, you didn't have any questions, usually? Do we have any public comment on this hour? Here are no public comments for the second, okay, so it's bring about the discussion, we want to make a few thoughts, wants you?
I I do, uh, I'm more than happy to um use my discretionary fund to at least do this on a pilot. I, you know, I recognize my term has been for about another calendar year, and so um a lot of the hard costs are reducing the equipment and the installation, and so once it's there, but but then I also think that over the course of the year, I'm remain on council, I'm I'm not opposed to the discretionary funds for the maintenance eleven thousand dollar pieces as well. And and I think it would serve to really look at potential use of the life circumstance and other area of of the city, and and we get a play for it, maybe, maybe it needs to be picked up five times a week, maybe it only needs to be picked up once a week, but but certainly, um, as we know, we'll know, and um, so if ever gives council any uh comfort, I'm I'm more than happy to uh use some of my discretionary funds to uh process, so thank you.
Uh, councilman, thanks for that.
Yeah, I'm just, I'd like to see some type of other addition to putting out any set of calls, um, as I said, it is an issue that needs to be addressed. Um, and it's probably not just over there, it's probably, I say, at the dog park. And sometimes it's dogs. Um, but I'd say I go around all the parks, because I write my my book at the dogs here, but it's it's now that I think about it, it's maybe around our parks, or giving some information of info from from the uh city staff or the office, see where the major area, what does everyone want their dogs concentrated where there is. But thank you.
That's what we need to notice. Um, I I think we all know that there's there's issues, we see it, you know, the residents playing fences and, you know, you see the issue, I'm wondering, um, and no, I I appreciate, uh, county member Hearns' uh willingness to revolve the issue by implications, bigger than this, um, you know, the district, I think it's an issue citywide. How do we tackle this issue on a on that rather, um, because, you know, on, um, right, right, and you you have that issue and people put some reins, people, um, now have dealt with picking up services, so how do we address this in a way that, um, you know, we can measure it, and it and evaluate effectiveness, whether it's putting the, um, those stations or having us roses or something else, um, but I think it's, they don't just, um, talk about that, right?
If I may, if if it is the ultimate role of the council, but if it's something at a higher level, and and a more citywide, it may be something we wanna look at during the budget process. As, um, depending on how big we go, what that route looks like, that could be someone frankly clues around most of a you know, attended the site, so I would just wanna be mindful of that.
So I do understand the point, but I don't need to deaden down here, but we're talking about one street and a thousand dollars a year, and trust me, if one street gets these, there's gonna be a lot of it bust across the city, and so how much are we going to invest, and are we gonna turn other people away and just say, no, Beverly, whatever, whatever this gets it, um, that's concerning to me, because I don't know how much we can do with a lot to this, we've got so many needs in the city, at the city level, things that we can't maintain now, so I just, I worry about that. But I do understand the need, I totally support the idea of making sure that at least about every part, because people do tend to walk their dogs around the parks. Um, I can tell you, like, the walk of landline as well, and also sunset, and I do, my husband and I actually observe people who actually bring their little doggy bags and fill her up and then toss them into the weeds, so they don't er into the bushes there a lot. And and I just don't know that you're gonna get those people to go walk back with their dog, is doing something, go get one of those, and they come back, they get it, and they go, I just don't know if that solved the problem, that's my concern, is that you have the ones that are responsible, the ones that just, you know, things happen, so I'm not sure it's gonna solve our bigger issue, and I think maybe it needs to get our attention, um, not to look at it citywide as opposed to one neighborhood. Uh, but I could totally support it, making sure we got it at every part, because that would suggest to me, that's my thoughts.
So, so Mayor, I I again, I wanna point out that, um, this is something I'm willing to underwrite through my my uh discretionary money, and again, we don't have great data from what I can tell. And so, as I said earlier, this could be a pilot program to run it for some time, get the data to really understand, um, you know, what the needs really are, and 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 frankly, if we had one in the streets here, well, you know, we all have discretionary money, and so it's a matter of what our priorities are, elected to the officials, and in this particular case, it happens to be in my district, and so, um, I've been pretty diligent with public safety for the primary use of my discretionary funds, because I've been on council, and I think candidly, I see this as public safety as well, which is a different level, um, and I just, I I think it would be that absolutely hit on the fact that, you know, maybe some public education and awareness is those part of the police captain inventions, but but again, I think we need the data, and I think this would be a great pilot program to do, that they, again, my discretionary money, uh, now wants to go forward, and um I think that it would be gotten for it citywide, even though it's my district, and so um, I would, I'd have to take that for, and if the council still has concerns about the eleven thousand dollar, maybe we reduce the number from six to three on this bill, or we can give a give a broader idea, and assuming you're gonna reduce your overhead by about half if you cut it that up. So, I just might present, and I would appreciate the council's support on it, thank you.
You have any thoughts, gentlemen?
Thank you.
Yes, that's my sense.
I I apologize for listening, yes. Um, do the dispensaries also have waste dumpsters?
Yes, it's part of the whole unit on top is where you pour the laundry bags and the violence, like, or something.
Okay, and then I think the, this is a matter of legislation, but who's responsible for that? For maybe some of those, both the dog and the bags and two of the things.
It would be our two staff, our through our question.
Alright, so, um, let's see, are we getting direction, or are we making a direction, this, but I saw what what direction we want to do?
If I can, I'll say my visit. Personally, I'm fine with this, piloting this area, but again, I'd like to see, um, how well we do with maintaining them, and how well the people if I'm a public, I'm considering the things obviously. But I don't know if I'm at this point, you don't wanna go further than that, and if anything, I'd like to see what other cities are doing as well, but I do think that a lack of educated training, worse for for dog owners is asking for something that would definitely help the team.
Yes, it's probably, I just have to, um, I have two lines of support, county member Hearns', um, whether he wants all of them, or half of them, it's a discretionary line, if we do need data, and just those points for the residents. Um, and maybe we'll go back with other options, whether it's, uh, health, like, surveys or anything else that we find to be effective, maybe useful. But I had a kind of support, um, councilman, I'm going to, so we put that in. Steve, that's true, Brad, do you have anything to add, or anything?
Uh, no, how do I get, uh, first of all, thank you, appreciate the council's support in this matter, and the end there, the value to the city, citywide. Um, and and again, I will trust the staff judgment, whether it sits on Beverly makes more sense or, you know, spread them out across up and down Sunny Slope, uh, Hillcrest. Maybe two on, two on each, or I I don't know, I don't know where the problem is, I'm not out there when I'm walking, except when it's on the sidewalk, and then I react, so I progress and stuff, staff, whatever, thank you.
That's really good, that's amazing, though.
No, I'll support it, it's a shame, but it's a huge amount. Direction, whether it's clearly out there, discretionary or maybe you need a number two. Actually, I would say maybe, um, I know, personally, I don't like carrying bags for long. But, uh, at least I'm felt. That's best, it's not, it's not.
Okay, so I would express my reasons, but as a pilot program, maybe question to because I think it's worth doing, I think it's worth leading the situation study, because it needs to be convenient and user accessible. But definitely one day that we try it from here and see, and just anybody who asks it's a pilot, but you know, saying it's gonna have help with the city, but, um, you know, I definitely think we should, we should give it a thought, and as long as we put way around these equipment, you know, how how difficult that is, you know, the, you know, how's it, how's it looking? After, with, and great, and we solve it to be, I give it, you know.
So if you're gonna use discretionary funds, then I think we brought applicants.
Okay? I think perhaps.
If I'm comparing clearly with consensus, we'll stay with the model asked proposed.
Yes, I don't know, it's making easy, making easy done, you're so. It's item three, uh, discussion of direction regarding agenda review process.
Um, I'll keep this one, the mayor and council, so it was previously requested by majority of council that I've been agenda items we brought forward to consider the overall review of draft council meeting agendas before they're brought to council. And we recommend, my, my office recommends that should council give that direction, that clear guidelines be established for staff, because currently it takes a majority to place an item on an agenda. So if there's authority to move items, or wait on the door, boom, boom, wait on items, pull items, um, so that staff's not in the middle of politics, that there be a clear set of rules.
We just prefer everything purposes, when I, I know the process has happened, and I specifically did say not requesting any kind of before you to remove any items or which, but, uh, the whole intent is to have another set of eyes on the agenda in case something's missed, we have had a couple of items didn't get back on at the next meeting. And also just the idea of going over it with the the city manager, who makes the final call on the agenda. And if it looks like there's gonna be a lot in the plan to get done, kind of part of stock, we might go to the guys and say, hey, this may have, you know, maybe a lot longer items, that's the idea, it's not to dictate what fits on the agenda or off the agenda, I would just make observations and let me uh, make final decisions on that, because that's my own intention, so this is the, the. So we have questions, then, councilman, Mr. Sanders? All right, do we have any public comments in this? We have no public comment any time, this time. We're in a targeted discussion.
Uh, sir. Yeah, so I I'm not in agreement with this at all, I think that, um, since the general president, um, as was just stated, politics are at play always, and if we say something here publicly, doesn't necessarily mean that that's what we're really gonna do, um, so if that were to happen in every day of the year, you got the same all the time, not just one person. So those are my thoughts.
That's really good.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So, I I I I'm gonna support this, because I really appreciate, um, all the coverage that goes into an agenda. The advanced slot, I think is credible. I like the idea of having a second set of eyes on it, I would move forward, because, um, there have been many nights where things on the agenda were very technical, and they often found a way to the end of the agenda, which is like one of the ones, um, the stain, because if it's technical, I wanna hear it earlier in the meeting. Now, I'm somewhat comforted by the fact that we're gonna move the council meeting to Tuesday at nine AM, so I'm I'm reasonably hopeful that we won't be doing this at PM, but, um, uh, we also heard it play out tonight, where I still think that the council members have the opportunity from the diet to question how things evolve on the agenda, and when things are pulled, councilman, this is what it ended, well within his right to do so, did so tonight, and he got to the bottom of it based on the the person being present and misexplaining it, so I I like the, I I like the checks and balances. Uh, a strong advocate for trust but verify, and so I get the concern, but I don't believe that concerns uh, I was gonna get wrong, and so I'm I'm more than happy to support this with uh clear direction from council, so that it doesn't be done politicized to the agenda, because that's absolutely what it should not be, but thank you, Mayor.
So I would never even think that we would try to influence any of it, but the investments, it gives a repressing effect. And that's why I didn't support this, um, so, I, um, I, I've seen the chairman question every time, probably, I don't know, since that been around, but, um, of course, I can wait for Jen Burns to next year. Um, no, I I, I just think that checks and balances, we give him a check, balance everything, and if he doesn't do it, then we get on him. Get on him. I I don't see that.
Now, disagreeing, only because I believe the city manager does to every single department to get a little from them, or a meeting which is on a council meeting. And oftentimes, we don't seem to, well, after it's published, so if there's a mistake, or something isn't there, we have no interest. So it's not about trying to control, as I said, and I'd be willing to have something in writing that says, the mayor doesn't have anything all over the item, but simply to give you, you know, okay, there's, you know, three items that are really complex, it's just gonna go after whatever our time, you know, um, and and the other thing is if something isn't, so that we don't, you know, it isn't it's, you know, there's a lot of stuff that's added to our agenda, you have things waiting, right, for months to get on the agenda, so it's it's having another set of eyes, and that's just how I feel about it, and my understanding was that, um, we did have to have seen it, but and I'm not asking for that one with them, but I just would love to be part of the process, because it's fine, so. Anyways, that's my.
Yeah, the other part about that is, um, you brought previous, I don't know, that can work out too well, but we, you don't know what the future means. So you know what, I, that's why I I can't vote for this, I think, I, we have to trust our staff, I I trust you guys, you know, I voted against you, so. Anyways, uh, you know, I trust staff, you know, I mean, it's most of the time I'm gonna go with them, unless it's a good, that's it.
So I think we're kind of tight, so it's unfortunate, uh, councilman, I asked us, so we couldn't touch on three two or something, um, but let's move on, um.
Motion, Dallas.
Yeah, we don't have consensus. All right, so we're ready to see the pollsters successor, council, we need to see the redevelopment agency. So we have an annual report on the pollsters successor agency, law and moderate income, housing asset fund for fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council, um, as you may remember, or not, but stated in the staff report, uh, back in twenty twelve, all state redevelopment agencies were dissolved. So at that time, city jurisdictions and planning jurisdictions had the option to opt in to be a successor agency to manage the funds, to manage the projects, um, and items moving forward, and so this is a requirement, um, as we are a successor to the redevelopment agency, to be able to submit a, um, fund down to the. to be able to submit a, um, fund down to the summary of what actions have occurred. This, uh, report is actually also attached to the general plan and public report, which is all under tonight, and also just gets submitted to HCV and the many, uh, agencies as well. So this time, if you have any questions, uh, please let me know, but we are seeking to review and to add this. Do you have any questions for council, council members, members?
No, it's time, thank you.
Pass on the birds.
We've not time to them.
Pass on the press.
No, it's time to put your thoughts.
We haven't talked upon that.
We have no comment upon it for the time.
And just a reminder, the council, you're saying the successor. Um, do we have any further discussion of integration? I understand, I'm going to choose to approve this item, so.
You're requiring them.
To accept, yes. All votes in favor?
Yes.
Yes, no prepares close to. But that takes us to our information on reports, maybe assignments, um, council members, do you have anything?
Well, probably I do not, man.
Hi, councilwoman, press, I would tell me.
No, it's in the report.
Um, I have a few, so I'm afraid it's short enough to be a lot of these. Um, so we had a hospital ad hoc meeting, and it was actually convened at my request. Um, I was really very happy that council had, the county had canceled our January ad hoc meeting. And didn't really know the county cities about its intention to move forward with the town hall meeting to present their proposal about JPA directly to the public. We just, I guess the city just basically got a flyer saying, would you please share this? So I was concerned and asked for a meeting, and so, um, during the meeting, um, I, I emphasized to me my concern of the, the way the flyer read and the things that I was hearing was being presented to the public as the solution to the hospital situation. And I had a concern about swaying public opinion in that direction when there's three other proposals being considered. Um, so I had requested supervisor Pillo, who was emceeing the town hall, that she, uh, indicate that this is just one of four proposals being considered and that, um, there will likely be more town halls and, and the other potential partners in the future, and that they all deserve the consideration. She did a great job at the town hall, and the consultant shared their proposal. And some more details getting added from what we listened, uh, what we heard at the last, uh, presentation from the family uh, by consultants, um, and I don't know how much you tell me you want, um, as to what the proposal is. Um, I believe the town hall, which reported, um, the, uh, some further developments, we had, uh, when it was presented to a solace value, the oil was supposed to be a part of the JPA and managing the hospital, they've since pulled out, and there are the consultants have not identified any good placement for them as yet. Um, financing is an area of concern, and that's to be able, uh, that was something we've all talked about, and it's getting a little clearer. Uh, town's proposing to put up five million in the reserves. And then it looks like they're going to rely on some borrowing lines of credit, tax credits, and attend the ten million dollar distressed hospital loan that would provide additional capital between seventy two and twenty nine. Um, we are believing that the distressed hospital loan is going to be forgiven, but it's not very given considering the financial dividend stake, so that's kind of up the end. Um, their goal and the way they see the hospital growing is they want to build a physicians group and bring twenty five to thirty new physicians to the family. And they specifically speak will help the hospital grow from their financial stable. There's questions about, there were questions from the public about difficulty in attracting physicians here and how they do it. And they indicated using various financial incentives, and they talked about a ten year timeline to build out this group. So that's kind of where they're at, I feel like there's still pieces missing. But, uh, I think, as they said, the client is still very fueling and changing, so we're likely to see more from them. And that's all I have to report on the town hall. Um, Friday, we've had a call workshop and strategic planning session that was led by a wonderful facility here. And our new board council is, was there, and we had great discussion on the Brown Act and answered a lot of questions. Um, and we worked our mission vision and talked about goals from here, there's new staff there, there's a lot of new energy, we're heading in a little bit of direction, so I'm just really happy with that. We had an internal development ad hoc meeting, I'm sorry, councilman, I'm going to be there, I'll bring you one later. But we just, um, basically it was a follow-up to the initial park foot meeting that was held by staff. Um, where they indicated wanting to have more, uh, conversation, and so we, we reinstituted the ad hoc to kind of, uh, answer that. And so we have not as many people show up as, but several of the park foot owners were there and had some good discussion, um, about what was working, what wasn't. And we'd like to do more engagement with the non-park foot business owner to kind of feel from them what is working and what isn't. And also even make the residents to really see since the street's actually long to the community, you know, how they feel about them, just to kind of get an overall picture and then maybe even do a survey, um, from the community as well to get more info. Because we wanted to, you know, the direction from council was to try to look on transition, transitioning this to a more permanent program than the vital program. So that's kind of where we're at with that. And I also went to a, um, special evening with the first five, Resilience Network and Collaboratory, maybe the, it's gone. We had a listening session, dinner, discussion about the new community center that they want to build. Um, talking about different programming, just support for all of these seniors. It's kind of a kickoff event, and there's going to be a campaign coming. So you know, you want to come about that. And then, um, I'll tell you about more ribbon friends. One was for the commercial kitchen at the Resilience Network Family Center. The kitchen, he's going to help support programs and provide, you know, free for families. Um, and also attended John was sort of ribbon betting, and it was kind of exciting to see that there's just a lineup that they want and they're busy since they opened, so that's, that's good to hear. Anyways, that's all we use. Right, so do we have any other council reports, councilwoman, or this?
Thank you, um, as was said by the public speaker, this, this, uh, Ruth Erickson. I did speak to her and she, um, actually informed me, you know, there's actually no debate about it. I had a conversation with the city manager. I gave the packet over to the city first, if she can make copies and if she works with the city council. And if she thinks it's a both there and even if it's a problem, so I just do it now, or if the council will take it and bring you that, that um, to future agenda item, essentially what I'm hearing from this Erickson and her concern seems pretty valid, is that they want to get rid of all the landlines. And we can see how that could be concerned, especially to a one or two senior citizens that we need to who has probably had, I was, I'm assuming, a landline for quite a while. So I'm hearing after talking to the manager and her, and getting one more SD on, this is a huge concern. And, um, it's a hot topic at the California League. So I would ask my colleagues to get on board and let's support our senior citizens and tell them, please do not take away the community's landlines. That's that, I also wanted to thank, uh, public life staff. Uh, this, again, like always, every time it's raining out there, I think of you guys, because I know that you're out there, especially when the winds are so heavy and it's raining and there's all this debris everywhere. I just want to thank you publicly for all of the work that you're doing out there for the community, keep us nice and safe. I also wanted to, again, I should probably just, I, I keep forgetting to ask you this, but the I don't even know what to call them, on Sally Street, those black bumpers around the roundabouts, the one, I mentioned this several times, the one way into Sally Street, it's just been a mess, I'm wondering who maintains that, can we maintain it? Even like the weeds around it, and so Sally Street, but even worse, Central Avenue is pretty, is pretty big up, and so if we can look at that. And this is a happy trajectory also, that who's maintaining those, let's get those, let's, and if one of those things is, um, is broken, let's fix it, it's, it's okay. And then lastly, tomorrow's, uh, election day, so I just like to remind everybody to get out of those, very important. And then just, uh, thank everybody that put their name in the race, so to speak, it takes a lot of effort. Uh, it's a lot of work, and I'm happy to see the elections season comes to an end, and I wish everybody luck. And, um, please, I'm pretty disappointed, I think you have such a low voter turnout, I think it's not just us. But, um, yeah, I just want to put that reminder on there, get out there and vote, thank you.
That's really good.
No, thank you, man. So I want to echo, uh, what councilman, those entities have said about please go on the vote. Um, your vote on a local level makes a huge difference. And you can't make impact change if you don't have the people in place to make the change. So please go out and vote. Uh, just turn my in at the, the firehouse, uh, number two this evening on the way in. So it's about time, but it's not much. So, um, I'd like to more support, uh, city, uh, writing a letter or, or taking even a word vocal pointing on, um, eliminating landlines or hardwired phones at home. Uh, makes a lot of sense, I actually have one, I don't know what the number is, but it's there as a backup to the event, and, uh, usually I just get a lot of solicitors all running, but I, I think there's still value in it. So, um, wanted to take a moment and ask everybody to just, uh, look up and look around when you're driving in and around our community. Uh, look at those beautiful green hills, I mean, we are seeing the benefits of why we live here. And, and for me, this is about my favorite time of the year, just because it is stunning looking at the surrounding valley and, and the snow-capped mountains that pave the rain. I mean, we're here, we saw it earlier tonight, uh, the true sense of community that, that a community was recognized for their heroic efforts and for just being a strong, uh, neighborhood community, and so appreciate what we have because not everybody has it, and I think we often date it for granted. And then the last thing I wanted to ask is, uh, I'd like clarity, is the motorcycle rally dead? Because we're in the March, and so, um, we're into what I would consider the critical timeframe to move things forward and then, you know, if, if Miami, Florida can do, uh, the, uh, uh, what do they call it, the spring break, and I see that there's a lot of requirements going on to make those safer events. Um, I'm not convinced it's not a way for us to get to a motorcycle rally this year, but, uh, I'm thinking time is of the essence. And so, uh, those are my comments, uh, again, thank you, man.
Also, the press, any comments?
We want the records tonight. Uh, so I agree with councilman, the members, I agree with councilman Burns. I agree with you, yeah. Yeah. I did want to read this, but this is, um, from the worst, to declare March Women's History Month. And declare March eight as Women's International. My job. But we can get some support for yours on that, like, for, um, um, Bulldog Boxing, they came up and were asking for some help financially. The young men came tonight and we really felt, you know, um, I know their situation and I would like to I don't know what to correct, would is pass on some money for their tournaments and to be able to, uh, do what we do. Like to support for that, that's three thousand five hundred to come out of my discretionary. Speaking of discretionary, it seems like this, this is the first time I've ever said, I spent anything out of my discretionary, because I'm not sure how I feel about this. Really don't, and Bulldog, man, I go over there and you see forty kids over there. There you go. Um, um, but she, I, I don't know, maybe we should have a process or some, some type of procedure we go through when once a year, taking care of all these nonprofits and stuff like that to, to so that way we can add it into our budget. And instead of, I mean, I, I know discretionary is already there, but it just seems like, I don't know. I say, now I know that all times are not perfect, so I need them up. And you know, it's not fair to say no, yes, no, but, but anyways, that's just all I have to say on that.
Um, I support the initiative that I think we should do a little, uh, against moving around lines and March eight plus International Women's Day, if we, not just Women's History Month, um, I support really good work.
Okay, so I heard consensus on the AT&T landline letter of opposition, we can put that together and get that sent in. As for Vice Mayor, is in this, uh, question about Sally and Central Avenue, that is our responsibility. So I'll discuss that with the public folks department, uh, what we're seeing is in some of those areas, you know, we get dirt settling in, and then where dirt settles weeds start to grow, and I think it's our seed weeds and some of the bits and crannies of it, some of the fabric of the nice system, we take the look at that. We will be bringing an item back, uh, in the next few meetings, probably, uh, the next few meetings on the, on the rally and provide an update on that. Declaring the two items for, um, March, um, I, I saw, okay. Uh, Bulldog Boxing, eight five hundred discretionary funds tournament. Um, and then council member Perez's request for a process for nonprofits requesting funds uh, through the budgeting process or an annual process to request funding.
I thought we already had a problem. We don't have a process, I thought, I thought we did, um, which was to bring in our dirt and our councilman of the comments. And then gain the consensus, I get, I get the council member Perez's concern. But if, 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 maybe, do we, remind me, do we already, I, I thought we have a process too. No, we're going to admit their budget conversations. Seems to be like we've allocated money for not, well, we, we did tonight, we just gave one grand to, to leadership foundations. And so I feel like we have that process already, and so I, I don't see that there's a greater need, um, but, you know, I'm, I'm open, I just don't know that there is a need.
Yeah, I think what I heard was an annual process rather than all.
Are you still discussion on it, to see? You know, it's like, should we have, I mean, is this adequate enough for us, if we don't have already, I'm sorry. Maybe what we have is adequate enough, I just, I don't know, to me, it's a whole, you will agree, or.
Right, see, see, part of the challenge of the C-Bass is, um, well, number one, I mean, so I, I assume Bulldog.
You have a, I feel like we're having a discussion about it.
Yeah, so we're, we're getting into a discussion, but I think the city manager is actually going to be bringing that to the total path budget.
Yeah, we think they have, they say a budget. Because what I'm hearing is, is, you know, throughout the universe, it's going figure, so we might, we know a little bit about it, but
it's going to be, it's a large issue about all the, then applying.
And I believe mayor Casey, all three of the items you mentioned were covered, uh, and had consensus with the March items, Bulldog, and the AT&T ones. That is it on that part? Yes, um, I'll pass it over to our city, but.
Mayor Casey and council, we do have a request from the American Legion Auxiliary to have a proclamation, this is one that was done before for National Poppy Month, um, and so wondering if you, we have consensus to bring this back at the next meeting. So, okay, actually, sorry, it's going to be the last meeting in April, presents for the month of May. Right, man, thank you.
But, um, if there's other results, I think the most things is now.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All votes in favor?